Meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for its existence, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a benevolent justice for all.
I apologize for my entire just came from the big school. You look great. Please, it's North.
That's right.
Uh, call the work.
Justin.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Randy.
Here. Our call the roll call. We'll get there. That's what I say. That's what I mean.
Yeah, you're right. We can read the agenda to you there.
That's good. Uh, he was provided the minutes from March eleventh meetings prior to this meeting, my email and questions, comments, concerns.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second. Motion second, any other discussion? On a favor, or I'm sorry, roll call please.
Justin.
Uh, yes.
Mike.
Yeah.
Randy.
Yes. Been a long day.
Yep.
Uh, approval claim docket is also provided prior to the meetings. Any comments, questions, things? Help make most approved claim docket is presented.
Second. Well, see, we're gonna make it short.
Any other, you know, this way. I bet that's. Uh, any other discussion? Roll call.
Justin.
Yes.
Mike.
Yeah.
Randy.
Yes. I don't want your past. They roll allowance dockets as presented. Make the most to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussions? Roll call.
Justin.
Yes.
Mike.
Yeah.
Randy.
Yes. Bank reconciliation for March of twenty twenty five. Also provided.
Salute.
Second. Motion second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Justin.
Yes.
Mike.
Yeah.
Randy.
Yes. Sign.
Yes, they're bringing this assignment.
And public comment, Tracy, you're on the. Okay, well, that one is one. It was seven.
So I guess probably Justin has already shared with you, we, we have a new vendor this year. She does press on, um, applicates on T-shirts and, and dish towels or whatever. And she's asking about, um, the use of electricity each week in order to heat up her little iron thing that she uses. Um, she is willing to pay a premium price in order to have, um, use of the electricity. Um, our normal, our normal vendor price is thirty dollars, our premium price is seventy-five. So I didn't know if there was like if.
I think we had a little bit of a development.
Oh.
So I didn't, yeah, I brought that up all ago, Mike, as I, my.
There've been people up there that had nothing that's going to draw nothing like that in the ground falls trip.
Okay.
Yes.
And I got a feeling when she puts that kind of load on that ground falls, they're gonna go trip, trip, trip.
Okay. So is there a solution or is it just? I mean, she's, she's willing to just like take orders and just sell what she has there, you know, um, she's very willing to do that and still come to market, um. And it's really doesn't matter to me one way or the other.
Where was you gonna put her?
Next to one of the poles.
See, they're.
That's where the plug-ins are at.
Yeah, and they're all ground fault is what the problem, every one of those, they got regular breakers in, each one of them is their own ground fault. Is what it is. And last year, the only reason I say that is last year, the library was up there and they called me two or three, two weeks in a row because the Stockholm machine they had.
Yes.
Was it the break, tripped the ground fault.
Yeah.
And, and.
And we had, we have ran the cotton candy machine up there without any problem, plugged it in, but we were like up way close to the
Yeah, it, it never tripped the breakers, ground fault receptacle itself.
Yeah.
That tripped every time she called.
This, yeah, yeah, because I remember she had problems several times, so. I don't know, is there a? Can we put it up close to the building and plug into one of the outlets?
They're all gonna be, they should be the same ground falls too. You can try it. All I can tell you is you can try it. And I mean, even with her there, we're still not gonna meet our minimum. As far as you see. You know, I mean, we, we, we got, we're gonna be charged the minimum every month, no matter what. I don't think that that thing for three hours for every week or however, two and a half hours is not going to cause our, to go over the minimum. It's just not gonna do it.
Well, I've made up, she can possibly place the post that's not on a ground fault where we work.
Yeah. And, and I'm willing to, like, if she's willing to pay the premium price, so the difference between that is forty-five dollars and I'm willing to give that forty-five dollars. It's, it'd be a one-time forty-five dollars clue to the town to pay for her electricity that she uses. Um, if, if you guys want to do that, um, if not, if you don't wanna charge her, that's fine too, but, um, or if you wanna charge her more, would she, you know?
I think that's a good idea, you know, if somebody's needing electricity, a little bit more skill in the game. I, but I also see that, and we're not gonna hit the minimum necessarily, but we, I don't know.
I could be wrong, but I cannot, I cannot see that thing drawing that much juice that it's gonna cause us to over.
I mean, those aren't gonna, they're always when it first warms up.
Yeah.
Starts and, are we always under?
Well, we get like three communist center bills, the lights are on one and.
Yeah.
I've never seen a minimum bill yet, but.
Yeah. They're only, they would be over.
Seeing, I don't know, them two meters up there, I don't know if they're on this, because the lights at the community center are separate from the other lights on Main Street and everything.
Yeah.
I, I can't, I, they're gonna charge you a minimum, I can't imagine going over. They're, they're, Jody and I, the way they, the way they, the meter numbers that are on meters and what they put down as meter numbers, they ain't even a thoughts. So it's hard to tell what's wrong.
They can give me locations when I call them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we finally figured out one of was ballpark, took us a while.
I figured it's the ballpark, but you were questioning it because there was a high bill. No, it's still there.
Oh.
I mean, she's willing to try and plug it in, that's all we can do. And, and there is a receptacle down there by those two panels, you know, on Fletchel.
Yeah.
You may, I know that you don't wanna, you wanna keep everybody kind of centrally located, but I'm not sure. I know it's on a circuit all by itself, there's, it's on the east side of those panels, you may, she may bring a short cord to plug into that.
Do you put people down there? Maybe heading down that far or what?
Um, we have vendors that sit under that tree, um, between the school and the house, that, that direction. We, um, we have two or three vendors that, well, two vendors that actually sit there, um, Wilford Smith and Rose Smith. Because Rose likes to be in the shade because she has the baked goods. Um, but then we could put her on the other side of the road, which would be.
She wouldn't be isolating her, but I mean.
Yeah, no.
Other people back there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so. And we, we do that and.
Okay, do you, would, do you want me to go ahead and charge her the premium and, and give you guys the, the forty-five dollar difference? I mean, I don't have a problem doing that. Um, I think.
I would say if, if they're, yeah, maybe that's something to start doing, you know, if they need electricity and you have to pay the, the extra and then we get.
I mean, there's, there, there were a couple of weeks last year when it was really, really extremely hot, that Rose, uh, that has the baked goods brought a fan.
Yeah.
And she plugged into the, and just to run her fan, but that was just on the really extremely hot weeks to keep her product safe.
Yeah, and if we charge, then we're gonna get the gruffing and moaning, because, well, I paid more, but then they brought a fan a couple of weeks.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, but, but honestly, I mean, this, this could open the doors too, to like when the Kiwanis puts their booth up there that's got an air conditioner in it and they wanna plug in, but then that was the door that we can also charge them for extra electricity too.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, yeah, I mean, it kind of goes, and what came to hand with what we've been struggling with, trying to figure out how do we handle nonprofits up there? Because we're, we're giving a lot in that facility. And it needs.
We gotta rein that, we need some major, major work.
Yeah.
Or, or.
Yeah.
Or back to that. You know, the giving's not bad, it's when you're making a profit of an event you're having there that you're running for free, that's kind of.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I, what I said to the other vendors is, you know, if it's something, it's my for-profit venture. We, you know, town probably should try to recoup all these some. I don't, it's a balancing act. If you want it to be there, we want the farmer market, but. I, to me, I would say that we, if she's willing to, to do it, that we charge it. But then that would be, I think that puts it on, on your committee though, that to hold everybody to that standard, you know, if it's in, they're gonna have to pay the.
Well, and the only reason it would be for her is because it would be every week.
Yeah.
You know, if, like I said, Rose brought a, a fan, like, I think maybe, and actually it wasn't last year because last year we were ran out so much, it was horrible. It was a year before and, you know, and, you know, it's kind of like she had to, she had to have it to keep her product. You know, because she doesn't wanna sell dama vanilla, build, you know, bread to people. Um, so that, and that's the only reason, it was just maybe like once or twice when it was like, you know, a hundred and two degrees or something.
Well, a, a fan is negligible. I mean, as compared to a hot iron.
Power, that's nothing.
Yeah, and this lady is gonna be having it on every week that she's there.
Actually make.
So.
So. I mean, she would make her, probably recoup her money real fast, if she didn't make it there rather than take.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure. Yeah.
I.
For those weeklies, why wouldn't you just take whatever that additional fee is pro-rated to a weekly cost for the times when you either have a vendor comes in just one week and needs electricity? Or you've got an existing vendor who needs electricity this week? Whatever that extra forty dollars is divided out by however many weeks and just charge that and mark it up a little bit.
Yeah, maybe that's kind of if, you guys, you know, do you want that burden, I've got to figure it out.
I mean, it, it, I, I'll take it on, absolutely, if that's something that we need to do in order to have, you know, let, have our vendors have what they need. Um, you know, and I don't think that any vendor's gonna really care, because, you know, they, they make money. Even last year when we had a horrible year, you know, when we, when they were up there, they made money that week, so. I don't, I don't think that it's gonna, you know, be that much of an issue. If you take forty-five dollars and divide it by thirteen weeks, what is that? It's like. I'm not.
A couple of dollars, three dollars.
So I mean, maybe, maybe we stay if, you know, if it's extremely hot and they need to bring, bring a fan that she's five bucks for that week.
I don't, I don't know that we need it. I think just pass the forty-five through to the town.
You know what?
The, the fans aren't for making their product, you know?
No.
I mean, it emerges for make, to be able to make their product.
Right.
I, I think it's just too much for what little it is, two dollars and thirty cents or whatever a month.
I just seem to seem to take the forty-five dollars and spend it on the kids in the last one, you know, and make sure they have a nice blow up for the kids to all come up there or, or some.
Well, we, we changed, we've changed, um, our policies for this year. We did, we, we used to have an event every week, like a special event.
Mm-hmm.
And we spent a lot of money and a lot of time and a lot of energy on planning those events and three people would show up for them. So we're not doing a weekly event, we're doing three big events. Um, the first Tuesday of June, July and August. The first one's gonna be our big opening market, which is like we always do, the bounce houses and the barrel train rides and the pre cotton candy and popcorn and we're gonna have like a pie eating contest and a bunch of stuff this year. The second one is gonna be grilling and chilling and the committee itself is gonna be grilling veggies and brats and hot dogs and hamburgers. Um, we're going to do, um, I didn't, I should have brought my notes, I'm sorry, but, um, I'm not sure what all we're doing that week, but we've got a lot of big things planned for that week. We won't have a bounce house that week, but, you know, maybe we'll do something other, extra big. And then the first one in August will be on the fifth, which is, I'm told, the day before the kids go back to school. Do the kids go to school on the sixth?
I can't even look at that.
Oh, you're.
So we gotta get to this week.
I just would suggest having some kind of electricity policy, because that, I wouldn't even thought of it until you were talking, but I remember one year, I don't remember if it was last year or not, somebody brought a laser engraver and they were engraving on the spot.
That was the first year, yeah.
So I don't, I, I think if, if you're, if you're gonna be using it for the, the manufacturing of your product, it probably needs to be an additional booth rate because the town's gonna be taking on some costs.
I think that's what makes it cleanest is if the, what, what you were.
It's supposed to do the premium rate and then give the forty-five dollars to the town.
And then, yeah, that's your, and whatever your policy, you know, farmer's market policy, if you need electricity other than a fan to create, you know, for, you know, it's gonna be, but if you're creating your product or anything to do with that. Yeah, yeah, that, that you pay that premium and then you all just pass that.
Okay, that sounds great, I mean. Uh, but on.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Yeah.
On August fifth, we're gonna have a bounce house and the barrel train rides and, um, oh, and on the July one, we're gonna have the watermelon eating contest and, and I'm hoping, I'm trying if I can, um, for the fact that we're, the August one, we're calling it back to school night, and I'm hoping we can have the duck tank and have the principals or teachers or somebody in the duck tank, which would be a big draw. And then of course we'll have the pre cotton candy and the free popcorn and all that kind of stuff for, for that one, so we're just gonna take all of our money and energies and concentrate on just those three
Be good.
big events. And hopefully that works better than trying to do, and we'll still have the rock hanging every week and, you know, that kind of.
Sure, that's true. Sounds good.
So, okay.
Uh, here's a sign.
That's your, oh, I'm so impressed to speak tonight. Oh, I'll do that for you. Thank you.
Is that all you have?
That, that's all right, yeah.
Okay.
I just finished.
Um, and then real quick, before we go too any further, I, I failed to read my little thing at the beginning, pre-meeting announcement, so, uh, before we begin to go any further, I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being video and audio recorded for public record and transparency. The recording will be made available in accordance with Indiana's open door law. We ask that all attendees remain respectful and refrain from any disruptive behavior during the meeting. If you have any questions regarding the recording process, please feel free to contact me, Justin Rogers, town council president, or Jody Rankin, clerk treasurer after the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. We will now continue the meeting. Hope for you guys getting in and listen.
It's a little, yeah, yeah.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, coast.
Yeah. Okay, new business. Well, do, we want to do the department heads first and then go through all this. So here and was already, I failed to tell both of you, the meeting time change, so.
I was freaking out, because you had already approved me to be zooming in, I'm, I'm, I'm not that illiterate when it comes to.
I told Jody, I said, that would've been a fine time for me to say, oh, and by the way, the meeting time changed. Uh, so, okay, go ahead, Jason.
All right, um. All right, good. Tomorrow morning, uh, the crew is gonna be starting work on the tower that the commissioners agreed to pay for this morning. They called me today, so they'll be done tomorrow. Um, you guys approved getting a light worked on by Bryant's down around the station. I called Austin yesterday. He got a hold of Nichols?
Yeah, we're having a little issues there. The, the light to replace that one is several months out.
Okay.
Hmm. And there. Where?
He wasn't there where was that, but he said it's still, they're still waiting on it.
Which, yeah.
If it takes a couple of months, basically that just lights our sign.
Yeah.
So it's a downward.
It's a, it, the, the thing that gets I forget, eighty-dollar light.
Right.
I told him, I said, if it ain't here in two months, tell Nichols.
Find something.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because the company, they don't make, the one that's there now, they don't make that one no more, but the replacement was a month out, now it's two more months out.
Okay.
And God only knows what's gonna happen now.
Right.
So if nothing else, we may just put a different one up.
Okay.
Okay, but it's LED, so you can't repair it.
Right.
It just.
Right. Okay.
So, but that's, that's where it's at. Austin and I, we're neighbors, so we talk.
Okay. Make sure you guys know about it, um. You wanna pass up?
Uh-huh.
So we use I am responding county-wise. And that is a paid. Sorry, they're just the one paper that shows all the, yeah. I had to screenshot all those to get them. Uh, so we use I am responding through the county for our paging system. It's probably six, eight years ago, we decided to do away with a buying, um, buying payers. We use that GoSir phones. It's actually through the county as secondary service, but works out a lot better. It's all over hydrants and all that stuff on there. Well, our three-year contract is up and they're, by five-five, we have to renew our new contract with them and that's the pricing on that contract.
Let's say eight hundred nine dollars a year if we, if we did a five-year without paying up front. What are you gonna say?
I haven't seen it.
Oh, yeah.
There is. It's just money.
Yeah, it's just. I've been, I know we've been paying yearly, but I think, uh, the last time they had three-year contract on that is what we done.
Yeah, five-year might be a little bit too far out, because you never know, five years.
And maybe five years.
Technology.
In five years, things may change.
Yeah.
Um, but the three-year on the deal, I don't think it's worth just saying one year, you know.
Long, that's just, but see, yeah, that's three-year. Long one, I think. Paid annually.
They used to come out communications, but that's all zeros now.
Uh, you've got telecommunications?
That's what I stand curious about. That should be, telecommunications.
Which I don't have budget for your voting stations type because.
Little bit.
So I've got big budgets for the public, so you're gonna use your money.
Five would be touch.
Yeah, yeah, it's way technologies.
Take now, yeah, I wouldn't.
Yeah, I'm sure three years will become another added service that's.
Yeah.
How long? At least three years.
Three years, yeah.
I wanna say this is our, I'm very third.
That the county has been using there.
Yeah, okay, uh, so. I'm gonna say sure six. Say for sure six, I'm six here. So I can't remember all the signing first, five or. That's a good system, um. Now, like I said, we don't even have good payers, there are a couple of those that have payers, but we didn't even have the payers to give everybody if we did.
What's it, what's it do?
Made it.
I would need an invoice. Hmm, I need an invoice, I have to have it.
It didn't say on here what it said.
I'm gonna have to have some.
Yeah, they just sent us an email and you fill all that out and it's in it, so.
Will they bill me then or?
Um, I've not made it to the. The prices and sorts, I. But I worked on that last night.
Okay.
Um. End of the, this week. And I will be around some of the representatives this week that I can talk to and see if we can get.
Or, I mean, it may be, maybe it's to the bottom and it's, they invoice me or, you know, sometimes they grow it out.
What happens if we, because the county runs it? If we sign a three-year term and then this, like, end of this year, the county says, we're going to, I may respond for whatever, I don't know, something different. I mean.
There hasn't been any talk, but.
That's why I was wondering, talk to Jamie maybe and see.
I sent Jamie a message because we are using three counties measures paid for a, um, it's a secondary radio, so I don't know if you guys use a Tango Tango?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
And I asked her if there was ever anything figured out, because she was looking at, see if there was a paging option on that.
Yeah.
She never did respond back to it.
Hmm. Yeah, I don't have a person, not, not a one of these, I don't have a thing, but.
The county's gonna pay for that and we can pay it off, I'm not sure that. But.
Yeah, I don't know, because see, we don't use I am responding at all, but we're gonna use Tango Tango a lot. Would that be my, my, my responding?
If, if it gets through, if they can do it, if, if they can page through it.
Well, then there's things like you may not wanna do three.
Right, yeah.
Because Tango Tango is, uh, more and more popular, I mean, they're, we're using it.
Hmm, did I understand that?
It's eight, eight ninety-nine for one year, and then if we did a three-year.
Eight fifty-four.
Yeah, so it's, but it's. But in, but once, if you're, if you give us three-year contract and they go, Tango Tango, that is.
Sure.
It's seven, seven sixty-eight a year if we. So that, I mean, now, it's hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Hmm.
A year less if we did it up front. Uh. Our next meeting's after maybe, then.
Yeah, so thirteen. And I'm gonna be gone seventeen through the twenty-fifth, so it'll be, depend on how this goes. Then tracking through that screen, yeah, I'm seeing, I mean, I'll be back at the end of the month, but I would.
Yeah, we'll, see what it is.
Okay.
So it sounds like we basically are options, one-year term or the three-year upfront? Because the three-year annual doesn't think much since, you know, but.
Yeah, and I know it's. They have a different paying.
Yeah, it'll come out a little bit publicly. Because I wasn't expecting.
Yeah.
Which is what I would think would be.
No, no, I used to, I used to, there was my communication, which that communication, we had cell phones. Chief had a cell phone, so Rashid too has a cell phone. Maybe Seven Engine won't have a cell phone. We'd done away with those cell phones and that money that went out, but since last chief of.
Well, as you said, we just moved from communications, it's called telecommunications, which goes under internet. That's your internet bill, you know, down there, which you guys just upped the internet this year, that's another reason. Um. That it was taking so long to file reports, uh, which I mean, we were on the lowest speed up there and it was, once I got spectrum down there, it was pretty terrible.
Because we, we now have, uh, EMS now has their own. And then that in there as well.
I don't know anything about that, but I know what I pay for yours, so. So that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so they should have known enough to do this, because we ran into that last year and the balls, you all just pay your own.
Yeah.
So we, we done with it.
Yeah.
And he was good with that. Yeah, okay, so are all of your folks using I am responding? Because it's more reliable, or, or my understanding is it's more reliable than the payers.
Yes.
That's what I hear anyways.
It does, uh, mappings, we can respond on, we don't, shows if we're around the station.
Yeah.
What trucks are in service, shows every, uh, hydrant in the town, shows what pressure, what flow rate all the hydrants have.
Oh, really? I don't, I don't like it.
Uh, Jeff went through and put all that information in.
Are you, are you comfortable with a twenty-three? It. Well. Are you, are you more comfortable with the one year?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's what I would prefer. I mean, it.
Let me see it again.
So, so the twenty-three oh five is quite a discount, but it's all upfront. Three, it's seven, that comes out seven sixty-eight a year.
See what you're saying. I was thinking eight million of eight fifty-four, that's the reason, but.
Okay.
Eight ninety, okay, I see, yeah, read that wrong, um.
Or we, I mean, we can just do the one year.
That's what I was thinking, and let me try to figure out what's.
Yeah.
Okay.
First one year.
Yeah, if you, I mean, that'll take chunk, rest almost.
I'll make a motion that we go with one year for eight ninety.
Ninety, yeah.
I'll second.
Motion by Mike, second by Randy. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? Roll call please.
Uh, Justin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Great.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I think. Uh, next business is. Working at the station the other day, I noticed the back. Gutter and the facial board has came off the building, started coming off the building, took several pictures.
I said some, Mike, the other day we were walking about power washing the back of it and painting it.
I have a guy invited to. Right, I'll power wash it.
Well, you want a couple of high school kids to help you Thursday? Yeah, I mean, as long as they painted, I'd power wash, I would come help house.
When I got that painted, they knew only a power wash first.
Oh, they. Oh, they, they help, that's great. They'd be pretty bored.
What's the ask here, sorry?
Um. Yeah, I'm doing, um. I don't even know where to start.
Pretty simple, just to get that back.
Well, no, I mean fixing that. Facial board and stuff.
I'd say it's all rotted out, I mean, it's probably a two, three, four inch gap, it's pulled out. All the water's coming off the roof right in and running down there. And you go down through there, all the gutter nails are backing out, so that like, you know, the board is very weak. Okay, you guys.
So we'll get quotes on, we'll get some prices on. Think it's something we're gonna tire out?
I think, I think if we do get it right, we get a quote on that, we need to get some kind. I have seen trees growing out of that before, because all the leaves and stuff they accumulated. It gets the gutters clogged and they can't work anymore. So if we do get prices to repair the, this and the soffit and stuff, we need to get some kind of a. Protection for the.
We're gonna have to, yeah. Make sure, yeah, if we can, I'm gonna work on getting a hold of some folks, know, uh, does Jerry and, uh. Yeah, Jerry and Mike, still, do they do gutter stuff?
I think they still do gutters now.
Sure, it's only I've seen, that, seen driving is gutter truck. You guys, they're, they're local, they're, they're gonna check with others. You don't think they do facial?
Ask them.
Probably because of that very recently, starting facial, running into all kinds of rotten, and it's like, a lot of things that. Turns into a lot bigger job once you first think. Yeah, we can, if you wanna, you wanna check around, Jason, I'll, I'll make a note, I could get a hold of the. Ronnie Shepard, come down and look at. They do a lot of work for, for us, not working, but. Very reasonable, would help out for public safety and stuff. You wanna see?
Yeah.
Get a hold of some contractors, I'll see what I can get.
Facial and gutters hopefully. I know like Ace, they do. One stop shop, but.
Yeah.
But it all of our gutters up at our house.
Okay. So, yeah, uh, you wanna just get some quotes from Randy back in next meeting?
Then lastly, um, plan on going to FDIC Friday. Um. Ran into a snag, you guys have, are getting some quotes for some gear, um. I can only find one vendor local that will come out and sizes. So in the last two and a half months, I've been able to get one quote. From, up that FDIC, um. Talk to manufacturers, see who their salesmen's are. Um, air and a, talking to them or whatever it might take, but you're gonna get some more quotes for that. Um, I won't see if, uh, pay a mileage one up and back.
We got travel.
I've got six hundred dollars and.
You might wipe that out.
Is it a N E D?
Yes.
About two hundred and thirty four dollars.
Oh, it's not.
I mean.
Pay too much for mileage, we're precious people that. What do you think, when you're looking back, how much you got?
I, I can't do.
Yeah. We don't have plenty of them, so.
Yeah, cause you don't have a department vehicle to take me. Yeah, I, I'll make a motion, we, yeah, pay mileage for the car there. And that we all see. Sure, to one vehicle, right?
Yeah, yes, it's just having one other that's gonna. We paid the second.
Motion by Randy, second by Mike, and the other discussion, comments, concerns?
Justin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Randy?
Yes.
Keep your mileage, your odometer reading, and then get back off and go off the form inside. Okay?
I'll take a picture.
That'd be awesome.
Uh, last thing on.
That was the last thing or something?
This, and then I say the last thing?
You see, yeah.
He did say the la, I don't hear very well, because you don't speak loud enough, but, but I heard last thing. Don't go ahead.
And the other last thing.
Yeah.
The last thing.
So, um, back with the gear, we approved one set of gear and then buying gloves and nomax, cause everybody's well over ten years. With being at FDIC, everything usually runs twenty five to thirty percent off. As far as gloves, hoods, don't have to pay the shipping, pack it out. Then know if I could get approval, that we buy this out of donation and then get reimbursed, because I feel like it's gonna save us. Pretty good amount of money.
That money are we talking?
It'd be out of my gear allowance and probably.
Yeah, use it off?
Well. I wanna say four thousand for a set of gear, I'm not gonna use near that much, I should be in thirty five hundred or less for my gear. Then the other will be for hoods and gloves, because we're completely out of stock and like my hood is. Thirteen years of, not guaranteed, it went well out of service of. Ten years if I look at the date.
I think what's, it's not much, I'm actually thinking we're spending on.
If I could get approved for two thousand, I don't see me spending that much with the discounts, I don't know what the discounts are gonna be.
Sure.
But usually whenever I buy all the stuff myself up there, you see twenty five to thirty percent. And then you don't pay the shipping. So.
Yeah.
You know, we, we.
It's about to get old prices.
And then.
We never, they don't all back off.
The last day, that's what they always do.
Yeah, in the ten years I've been on here, I've been after it four times and we've never. We've never took advantage of it, I mean, we bought stuff ourselves. But it's like, why aren't we taking some advantage of buying some of this cheaper stuff and bringing home? I know I already brought it up, and I think your guy reached out and gave us a quote on some fire deck explodes, but that was as far as we made it.
Yeah.
Can you, can you take a tax exempt form up there and pay for it on the spot? Yep, and then we just ran it up here, or what are you thinking?
Yeah.
Or send a card with him, or what's best for you?
Can send a card and a tax exempt, but I've got to have receipts.
Yeah, yeah, and I would do, uh, a lot of nights.
I mean, you can do that option, that's entirely, I don't know what your.
The only other option I would have is I could either pay personally or with my donation, my O one C three, which would also be taxed at the end. And then just reimburse that, but on that I would do itemized receipts as well.
Yeah, I have to have.
But if I can do a company.
Just do that. Do, uh, that'd be cleaner, I think, if, if you're, if you're good with that, just buy it that way.
Buy it.
Bring your receipts and everything back, and then we can just reimburse.
Yeah.
Or what amount?
The two thousand?
Well, just make it, yeah, two, two thousand cap.
Like I said, I'm sure.
Surely, I bet you get you a whole month, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, like I said, I don't know prices until I get in there, and I'm gonna be comparing them on my phone, I'm not paying.
Right, yeah. Okay, well, I understand motion to approve, but.
Somewhere two thousand, I'll tell you do that.
And then it'll come out in five, one C three, then we will reimburse with proper itemized receipts.
Not gonna get reimbursed if you don't have receipts.
Yeah, make sure.
Soon you're gonna take a picture. Count them as they go across.
Just make sure you got receipts, and that is it, Mike. That was the real last one. I made the.
You made a motion, right?
Yeah, Randy second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Justin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
I have fire department, which requires more paper, I never leave enough space for the fire department. I gave you one little spot today, Jason.
As I can walk in here and not say nothing.
It'll get better.
You get all your.
Last week we had our annual Indiana Marshal's Association Spring Conference. Um, I do chair that, uh, board currently. Uh, we've had a hundred and thirty officers come out from all over the state, um, to get our state mandated trained, really good training. Uh, had some really good vendors and things, uh, but. Uh, definitely appreciate you guys allowing the department to be part of that organization, um, that's big stuff. Uh, other than that, I have, uh, some electric issues in my building. Um, that I don't know what they're going to cost, I've tried to investigate myself, I've got fuses, and maybe Mike can help me out here. Uh, fuses that are, I'm trying to reset, not fuses, we don't have fuses anymore. But ours was, but they're, you know, tripping the breaker, I pulled everything out, um, it's the, where the. The kitchen countertop area is, that built out little area, um, all of those are out. Uh, that's why the front light's out, and then the light that goes over the.
This, that's a station.
Uh, and I, I can't, can't figure it out, I've unplugged everything to see if it was something that was tripping it, but, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna need some help.
Okay.
Figure out what's going on.
I'll put you on the list.
It's an extensive list, I'm sure.
Plus, I've got a little, little something to ask of you too.
Yes, sir.
Thursday is the townwide cleanup day, and if you could kind of patrol around a little bit, you know how a couple of years ago, we had that. Get that little turd that went running up and down Main Street real fast?
Yeah.
And you caught him?
Yeah, I talked to Joe, uh, Monday yesterday.
Okay, if you could just.
Of course.
Um, it would help with, uh, no.
Also, I don't know if Jeremy has any, uh, left him a message, but I know he could put his name too. Uh, I'm gonna need something for the mount, uh, the cameras to put up to the dumpsters. Uh, basically, I just need five gallon bucket of concrete and a four by four post. Um, I would imagine that we probably have some of those down at the garage, but if not. Uh, are you guys okay with me purchasing materials, put, build two of them, we'll use them again, uh, you know.
You don't, you don't.
I mean, get to J C, and J C can find anything down in the shop.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you don't, I've got two bags of concrete and.
Just some five gallon buckets.
Perfect, so.
Yeah.
Can you put, uh. Uh, in the heavy pickup, like a dishwasher?
No.
And a hot water heater?
The hot water heater, you, you, if you set it off the side, the guy that picks up the metal the next day will probably take it.
Okay, but no on the dishwasher?
You.
It's not mine, it's my, my daughter, she asked, she actually called me this morning and asked me. Our hostess know plants.
Yeah.
Okay.
He, he'll take.
But you think he'll take the hot water heater?
He, he took them last year.
Do you, will you pick them up and bring them up here then for them?
That's what we did, we had them down there last year, he just rolled them right on his cup picking trailer. He did.
But will it, will it, will it off, pick it up and take it to the dumpster? Or does she have to take it to the dumpster?
It'd be nice if she, last year, the most, the heavy. Is it here in town?
Yeah, it's, it's a trailer court out on Kell Street.
Is she on the list?
Charles, I don't, Jeremy said, I don't know, she just asked me this morning, so I don't know if she is or not.
Well, the guys could take a backhoe off, and throw it in the front of the backhoe. And all the. I mean, that's what we've done, the heavy stuff before, stuff we're gonna go and touch. There've been a few couches we didn't wanna touch. So we just put them in the front backhoe. Even needle clubs, I, you know, I've been through some pretty nasty stuff, but there was a couple of.
So I'll tell her, I'll just, I'll have her call, apparently counting all tomorrow, and see what she's been.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll talk to the guys.
Okay.
Because I'm on the trash. I'm having a trailer that we drive around loaded up.
Oh, okay. Okay.
You know, if you're gonna get people going to say, water heaters.
Again, were you guys, did you? Oh, it's tomorrow.
He'll take a weather heater, yeah, like I said, God bless, what else are you gonna do, and you know, oh, he, yeah, he takes one to get it, takes.
New business, all right, first we'll consider a minimum provisions to license the door to door solicitors ordinance. Uh, yeah, or go ahead, take it away.
I just have question, um, the ladies in the past, we had someone come in, had been charging five dollars, um. Then they redid the ordinance, and the five dollars is not in here, but someone kept charging the five dollars, and so we were quit. Wanted to ask me if they should do that, and I said it cannot in the ordinance, so you can't do it, and the. Ordinance clearly states it rescinded the old ordinance in its entirety. So do you want to edit this ordinance to put in the charge again, or just?
I don't see a problem with charging food trucks and stuff.
Now, this is.
No, this is, that's not.
This is the full listeners.
Well, they still do, but they, they covered.
Uh, yes, it does, you're right, it is, the back of it, I forgot about that, cause this was our, yeah, you're right.
Which, and, and I think another issue on that. Yes, I mean, I think we should charge something, um. Because the food trucks, I, you know, we have brick and mortar restaurants that pay proper taxes. Uh, food trucks always kind of run me wrong for that, for their purpose, I.
And Charles and I talked the other day, like, the North elementary food truck, I thought maybe it would fall under the nonprofit, but. The school doesn't get anything of that, they just invite them in for convenience, I, I, or something different, but.
They're able to pre-order all the food, wherever it gets, the truck, whoever gets there.
But then, again.
They're, yeah, and, and it's, and I'm not, I'm not gonna take a stand against the North elementary food truck, but I, I, it also, you know, the wheelhouse. Brickwax is not telling us, I guess, but wheelhouse pays. I, I struggle, and I always have with food truck, then, you know, they're paying property taxes. That we benefit from. And food trucks don't, food trucks come in, grab a profit and leave everywhere, there you go, I mean, I did.
So that affects the food trust that farmers market?
Well, and so, when, when I, I. Yeah, when this is run through my mind before, then the question always comes up, farmer's market and Autumn Fest.
Yeah. And matter of fact, there was an exclusion for Autumn Fest, that's why I said, shouldn't farmers market? Be in that exclusion with the Autumn Fest, or what do you want to do with that?
It's probably good, it just.
Yeah, there wasn't farmers marketed in, yeah.
But, but, yeah, I mean, as far as food trucks just coming into town, I mean, and I just setting up. Nothing wrong with it, but I think there should be some skin in the game. I mean, I I think.
I mean.
If not, we're not supporting our brick and mortars.
I don't know if the school charges a food truck fee, but we do charge.
Yeah.
Uh, farmers market does charge a food truck fee, so. I don't, I don't know. So does school owners. So does school owners, they do a rental. They do a rental fee.
Which that. That would suffice the ordinance for the. Town's portion like the order. Or the solicitor, I mean. Well, we don't know. Right now, zero.
Cause what we do, i- we do charge a food truck fee, but we take that twenty five dollars and we use it. For the uh weekly. If if they go around and visit every. Vendor, then they get to put their name in, you know, for a drawing for to win twenty five dollars. So that although we do charge a fee, we don't keep it, we we give it, we use that as a pride.
Gosh, yeah, I don't, I mean, this Autumn Fest, I, in my mind, I can, I can see the. Exception for that, it's one weekend, it's to draw people to town. You know, if a food truck was to come just set up in town. First, like North elementary is where it's happening right now, but. We should come set up on Main Street, you know, I would have.
Believe me, I was not looking at for this one, I mean, I was just wanting the five dollar fee that we charged. Go around selling insurance, I didn't, I wasn't wanting to dig into the middle of it, but then once I started reading the ordinance, I'm like, oh.
Yeah, I mean, it's something like. And and I know it has been some. With our local businesses in the past, but it's not. From from the head, but.
There's been some comments.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Just two cents. If you charge individually, like they had to get a day permit. I think it would deter them from coming to town. If you charged a yearly permit, even though higher. It would actually encourage them to come in for multiple minutes. If that's what they so choose.
Yeah, yeah, cause I mean, that, my my mind anyways is not not to deter. But I think we need to figure some, one, I don't, I don't think a twenty five dollar fee is gonna really deter anybody and two. You know, it's a great idea on the yearly fee, but. That might deter people just as much if they know they may only be out here once a year. Might only get invited once a year or might, you know, then they're paying a yearly fee for one.
North Elementary tries to do different. Doesn't have to miss, he decided to go off.
For for now, no, you're not in charge. We've we've got to stay within the. Within the ordinance, so, yeah. Just be no, no fee for now and then we'll bring it back up.
I just feel like if. Um, I agree with Justin. If you want your food, you can call the wheelhouse, say, hey, I need an order.
Yeah, but yeah, that. It is taking business away. And when they were closed. On Mondays, the North Elementary was having a food trucks on Mondays, it was like. Okay.
Yeah.
But is it open?
I mean, how they opened back up again, I I that was. You're exactly right, when everything was closed on Monday, I thought it was great that they had the food trucks, but now they've decided. To open again on Monday, which.
Can do a little research, see if there's any around. But they do some comparisons and kind of maybe.
Yeah.
No, by next month.
They're falling in with uh green order ordinance, typically I'm gonna check that they're in good standing with the state. Uh, the licensed business, do we want to check anything food wise? What do you, what do you want me to check? I guess is what I'm asking since.
On food trucks?
Yeah.
That's one thing I know Evansville is really struggling with, they had no ordinances on food trucks, they were struggling. Trying to get anything that covered food trucks because nothing they had.
We're all enveloped that.
Yeah, so kind of boom. Yeah, they they really, I think they did finally get to where they had to have. Uh, hood suppression system.
Really?
Yeah. If they were, if they had grease in there, they had to have a hood suppression system. But like I said, the health department really struggled with that, so I mean, I appreciate you checking around because it'd be interesting.
Well, that's just I've been out of it because we were talking about this ordinance, you know, like, I need to know what you guys want me to check when they come in. For the the clearance for that. Uh, this would be able to solicit in town. At least in the past, that's what I've done, is verify that they're. You know, in in good standings with Secretary of State and their license, we get a lot of Illinois come over too.
Yeah.
Uh, so just checking with that.
Yeah, I would think as long as the health department has to show. Yeah, okay. Uh, motion to table. But next meeting.
Send back the motion.
Roll call whenever you're.
Who motion, sorry. Uh, Justin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes. Okay, another amendment, ordinance amendment to consider for weed and grass ordinance. This is.
Something we talked about last year, we really kind of dropped the ball on getting it going, but. If you looked at the weed and grass ordinances that I sent you and the vehicle one, they're all very similar in nature. But one, you get five days to pay, one, you get sixty days to pay, one, i- they're just really all over the place. Wanting to know if we could just draft an ordinance. Almost what we call a nuisance. It's not a nuisance or it is a nuisance. And have sections for weed control, garbage and trash and vehicles and kind of try to streamline some of this, because. When I talked to Charles, we start trying to get some policies down and like, do you want us to have a verbal warning first? We're, you know, I'm trying to, I'm building a form to track that for us. Um, so he can do it on his, enter it on his phone and we can kind of watch it here in the office and help with administrative things. But we need some guidelines and they need to be the same. Across the board. And I don't mind to draft it and get it together, I just need your thoughts.
Yeah, I definitely think they need to be put under one ordinance and then just just invite it out if they're separate.
So you want to put the weed, the grass and like a disabled vehicle and garbage and trash all of it. All of it in one ordinance and they just kind of combine and comb them up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the fines and the violations, we're back to that. Uh, you know, I think I sent in your packets, you know, I clo- you know, we we paid out over a thousand. Sixteen hundred dollars, but we only collected six hundred of it back.
Yeah.
Because.
I saw that.
Just of the communication process of who paid, who didn't pay, who who do we go after, the timing of it, it wasn't any fault of. It is just, we had personnel changes, I mean, it was just a lot of things. Um, so just trying to get that cleaned up, so we're we're kind of recouping what we're spending for that.
I think with this, at least as far as the ordinances have been. We. We're actually not going to recoup that cost unless that property sells. Because it's going on limits. So year to year, we're gonna continue to take a hit on this if we wanna, if we wanna push this. For the the betterment of the town and and the upkeep of the town, I think that's something that we just need to anticipate and I don't know where those ones come from, but.
Yeah, and I I just know that in it, like, I never sent out an invoice, I know Lily did not either to someone, once we got. You know, I got an invoice, just I know Jace saying, hey, I did these property, you know, it's like, so. And it was probably a failure on our part to not go ahead and turn that invoice back around and we can be pretty persuasive to people sometimes on paying their bills, so. Um. I mean, we could have kind of followed up with that, we've talked about the track system, so we can get that in place, uh, which we can also. Use if they're not paying, so.
Can I ask a question? Who tells Jace to clean up the property, you or him? Then Charles, shouldn't it be your responsibility to make sure the invoice gets in there at the right and it says what property it's for?
Well, Jake, uh, Jace has been submitting those back to the town.
Yeah, I know, she don't know who to send it to, she doesn't get it. Well, if the day he does and if he comes. Then come in here and say, this is for this property, then you know, he just. I know it's a pain in the butt for him, but if he would come in here and say, this is for this property.
Yeah.
And I kind of had a a thought that I want to throw out for you guys on this too, is is. Why don't we have our. Uh, just have a town.
Okay, I did talk to Jeremy about that today, we, as we thought some ideas around asking and he is on, but he can't talk, um. In the past. The grass had gotten really high. Town goes in and mows it, tears up the equipment. Because there's stuff in there, they don't, you know, and so. Our equipment's broke down, we're spending more, I mean, then we got downtime, then we've got twenty six acres to mow that we've got to keep mowing, and so. If we can stay on top of it where it's not out of control, where, you know, I mean, you may still have some, but not near. But, you know. I again, we would have to do some tracking because then I've got.
Yeah, well, my being, you could, you could tell, just tell Danny, say, hey, we need you to go to this address, let us know what, you know, how much time you spend there.
And I don't know if Danny would want to do that because he has a side business, so he's just helping us out for time.
Yeah.
To fill in for some of that, so I don't know. That'd be the one thing. And actually with the form that I created, once we know more about it. Once Charles start putting in his data, then we've got a little bit more of a follow up, I know where the properties are, we know what's happening with it. That'll be huge.
So the the issues with the grass is it. Like with the trash cleanup, you can almost set a button and then it's going to be revisited at this date. Um, you know, we just had torrential rain for four days. You try and set a date on high grass and then you have that happen. And you know, is it realistic that the grass got mowed within five days? Um, yeah, that, just some issues that have come up. And then you get two days of sunshine and I mean, if you've got weeds in the yard that most of these lawns that we deal with. Are not real grass, it's mostly weeds and they take long, I mean, overnight. And so then if the town was to come out and mow it, uh, there could be things hitting in there, you know, a lawn ornament or something like that, um. When we do outsource it, that all falls on them. I know Jace, uh, you know, kicked a rock one time, busted out a window of a neighboring house. Jace took care of it. You know. Yeah.
Because he has liability, it was John Schmidt's house.
Yeah. So I mean, those types of things happen. Uh, he hasn't indicated that he wouldn't, I had to talk to him about it because I knew we needed to do a lot of cleanup and. And see what it was, what the ordinance was gonna look like, but. Um, I mean, if if he doesn't, we could, that's something we could get out or, you know. See, see what we wanted to do, but that was, at least when I talked to Jeremy and I came on on sixteen, I kind of took that over from the street department. Um, just as a all encompassing, you know, ordinance enforcement. And that was definitely a big discussion over, you know, what's hiding in that grass, and these aren't the most meticulously kept lawns. So.
Yeah. Well, how about the reason we get the, we like. Maybe revisit this next meeting, give us a, give us a month to combine them and and throw some ideas out there and. And come back with something next month that we can look at.
I can.
And you can get together with Charles and and figure out a a a good way to. Make it easy for him to enforce, but if that does get enforced.
And I can combine them and send it to.
Table again.
Bill to see.
Yes.
His thoughts and so I'll combine them and then get.
Mike, you making a motion to table it?
Yeah, you did, I'm seconding it all.
Yeah, you made the, was your motion?
It was, it was kind of a revisit, but a motion, yeah, that'd be fine, yeah.
Motion by Randy, second by Mike. Uh, any other discussion, comments, questions concerned?
We just might have to pass it on one reading just because it will be made.
Yeah, it'll be time, yeah, especially with eight inches of rain, yeah.
Uh, roll call.
Uh, Justin?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah.
Randy?
Yes, I feel my wife, she was going wrong. Well, she don't let me, I don't gotta, I don't go slow enough. I don't go slow enough. She said not leave too many, it's not a produce side.
And. So the first reading of our amendment revision of the fixed assets ordinance.
Uh, if you could see, I I've been in the packet I gave you, the the ordinance that was here for fixed assets, number one. It had the town of Popstadt in it still, um. It also, the numbers were not with our property casualty insurance. Uh, it also did not have a way uh for me to depreciate things, uh, such as in a straight line method. Which is what is. To depreciate would be the best way for us, so I just fixed the ordinance. Do the entire ordinance, see?
No, and so basically just fixed the.
And we really, the inventory was on the last ordinance and you really should have an inventory on your ordinance because it changes every year. We've sold vehicles, we've got rid of things. I'm sure what I have to say either.
You mean on your, like your inventory down at the shop? I see keeping an inventory.
Well, I have to have inventory. Or the count rule. And the state worth accounts gives you, if you do not know the value, there's a whole point there that they provide for you to come up with the value of things if you do not know. Cause I am in the middle of updating all fixed assets.
Do you need a motion to? For the first reading or how you both have what we need?
First reading, because we always suspend it.
Yeah, well, we can do that, the last few. Yeah.
Yeah.
Some good with that. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, there's no, there's no fines, the systems or anything like that, so we're good with. Yeah, so we would, okay, you entertain if this, so desire, we entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Or move.
Second.
So, this is Ben, that was Randy, Mike. Any other discussion? Roll call to suspend.
Uh, Justin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Randy?
Yes. And then we will. I entertain motion on the first reading. Uh, ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero five dash one three dash zero one. So moved again.
Second, again.
Okay, Randy, Mike, any other discussion? Roll call on first reading.
Justin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Randy?
Yes. And. You're taking a motion on the second, final reading. Uh, the same ordinance fixed asset capitalization.
So move.
Motion by Mike, second by Randy, any other discussion, comments, questions concerned? Roll call.
Justin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Yes. A little easier for you, you don't have to wait too many.
Thanks.
Accumulative capital development update.
I'd send you some information about the accumulative cumulative capital development. Um, that will be published in the paper before the next meeting, so I didn't know if anybody had any questions. Or concerns.
No, I'm I'm good, thank you for your work on it. No, I'm, I'm good. Thank you for your work on it. You don't need any action lines, just, you know, right?
Yes.
Uh, then easy time clock, moving into the first century.
Yeah. The May twenty-third paper, uh, it's just an app that we'll use, um. With the field personnel that we have, they'll use their town phones, seasonal employees like, uh, Danny probably still have a lot of time card, but. The online time clock will allow you to then sign these, uh, time cards for Charles and Jeremy real time instead of waiting. To after the pay has been completed. Uh, it is only fifteen dollars, um, a month. Uh, maybe a little bit more if we add some administrative things like, but it would be no more than twenty dollars enough to add it.
That's it?
Because it's a very costly vision, small, I mean, this is their kind of thing, it's small, yeah. It's based on, yeah, so we just don't have any for name, so.
So, so will the guys still put out paper one too, or they, they'll just do it all on their phone?
Block in, block out for lunch, and then if they do have on call, it'll be, they'll be able to drop down on call on the same day and how many hours. And then the great thing is I, I load all their PTO and vacation, so when they go to put a day in there. It's automatically gonna show them their balance, so they'll know how many days they have left, which is on their pay stuff, but if you don't have it with you at the time, so. It's all very lifetime and informative. It's pretty easy to.
First century, I.
It's already, it was easy, so I was.
No other set of costs or anything?
Nope.
Well, it probably, you can look at it and know every day, I mean, Mouse tried to tell me I need to do that, that's what I said, it was time to retire.
Well, you can rest assured, I mean, no, be looking at it every day.
It'll be nice, yeah. I think it's time for this fat boy to get out.
And then supervisors have the right to then fix time cards and override, do different things.
Perfect. I'm saying motion to, is that a contract or is the, is the pay by month? The. Second. Motion by Mike, second by Randy, any other discussion, comments, roll call?
Uh, Justin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Randy?
Yes. Thanks for working on it. Uh, one thing, all right, one of your minutes on that cumulative capital development. Probably ought to add to the record. Um, there'll be a public hearing here on May thirteenth. Excuse me, be a public hearing to consider a resolution to reestablish the town's cumulative capital development fund. In the position of a tax levy for that fund. Taxpayers appearing at the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five hearing shot the right to be heard. A copy of the proposed resolution may be examined and copied during regular business hours at Pulsville Town Hall, thirty-eight West Main Street, Pulsville.
Well, some new publishing paper.
Yes. The proposed tax levy will be levied on all taxable real and personal property within Pulsville and will be set at, but not exceed five cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation. The reestablished fund as proposed will be levied beginning with taxes due in April in twenty twenty-six. Subject approval by Indian Department of World Government.
Which is thirty cents now, several, several going up, yeah.
Oh, oh, yes, right.
Yeah.
Certainly thirty cents.
Yeah, yeah, it's not like it's.
Yeah.
It's only twenty cents.
And that's a five, better five thirty meeting?
Yeah, yeah, it'd be a part of our normal meeting, it's just, we'll have that republic here. The resolution will be heard. Not to hold up, any other new business? I want to know something that you guys, ain't just a crazy idea, you can bowl it, read an article the other day, because with our, uh. Like, streetlights being so expensive. Have solar streetlights now. I don't know if it'd be something we might wanna consider, if it would be worth the initial cost, if we would recover that. By not having such an exorbitant streetlight bill.
I can, I can. I can tell you that, you know, we put all LED lights in. The, the cost for them to put that in, it cut our, it cut what they charged us by two thirds. But that two thirds, we had to pay for them to put it in.
Yeah.
We're still paying a loan for that.
Yes, yeah.
Was it five or ten year loan?
It's, uh, I don't remember off the top of my head.
But it was, we had to take out a loan. And that loan payment is the other two thirds. That's the only reason we did it at that time, is because it, it, it was. But you have, if you do change them out to LED, you will have to probably pay. Or not LED, so you will probably have to pay.
So it'd be kind of the same situation, like, so what you're saying basically is I, if it's a five-year loan for the other two thirds, then. After five years, you should be able to make savings on it.
Yeah.
Okay. I just thought I was reading on that, uh, thought that's interesting.
Yeah, it's pretty cool because they go to a lot of California.
Really? Yeah, it's a good place to do it. We don't have hot wires that might start fire.
Build a. Per division, per, streetlights ending, you should think so.
Okay, moving on.
Moving on, it is correct thought, uh, yeah, yeah, but that's what we had to do when we chased them all out to LED. Just FYI, I knew, knew that or not.
Well, I knew that, like in Evansville, when they were, like a lot of the businesses, when they were moving more like LEDs, they were doing that program.
Yeah, they get, yeah, it was, yeah, it's a rebate, yeah. They veteran makes them pretty. Almost no barriers.
There's a lot of people done it. I have to get my kids to bed.
I don't know, you need to bed?
No, no, Becky's not home yet, my sister's at home. I just realized, hell, yeah, I know, yeah, that's what I'm worried about. We bad ass school tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get home, I'll be sleeping on the. Uh, you should have an extra bed. Uh, thank you. Gas, gas tracker requests, uh. Uh, reduced by one point two. We just want a motion to approve that.
So salute.
Second. Motion by Mike, second by Randy, any discussion? Uh, increase on rate payers for the next quarter?
That's good.
Justin?
Uh, yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Randy?
Nervous as hell, go home now. That's a good one, I love it.
And then process, we want to discuss process for a utility delinquent account.
Yes, uh, just kind of letting you, I provided you with the delinquent list, which is sixty, around sixty-eight hundred dollars. Um, just like to, we've pretty well got the process planned out, you know, I, I kind of did that. Uh, in the letter to you, the only thing is, is that, um, just got back from a conference in Indianapolis. And there is a large, large, matter of fact, probably maybe only a handful of people anymore that call people when they're delinquent on their bill. They receive a letter, there's a process and they're shut off. What's happening is, we're calling. It's taking us ten days to get, sometimes more than that. We just had someone come in yesterday, thirty days late to make a small payment. And we asked, are any of these numbers, oh yeah, those are all of our numbers, but they just, they don't call back and they avoid us, and so it just. It just keeps happening and happening. So. We're wanting to call them this month and let them know that this is the last month that they're gonna get a courtesy call, that they're being shut off. They will have a delinquent letter. And then at that ten days, the eleventh day, the morning of, the guys will have a list and they will go around, yeah.
This is gas watering.
And then, yeah.
And then they have to pay the full amount and they're reconnecting if they're shut off.
And we're, and obviously we're, the office is aware of the state laws that cover.
Correct.
Certain times of the year, we know.
So this, we're getting through time because it got cold, so the gas, we don't have issues.
Right.
Would, would they have an opportunity or does the town have a policy where they can, uh, have some kind of payment option or payment arrangement made of any delinquent? Past due?
Within three weeks of the next bill coming due, yes, we do have payment plans. We do have. A couple, uh, actually two people now, who's else? Because I've taken the calls before, um. That are on disability, so their disability checks come like the third of every month, so we know that those two people are going to come in and they pay faithfully. Every time that, and you know.
The only reason I ask is because we have, we do have those periods of the year where, you know, we can't, so they're just gonna continue to, to, uh. A delinquent amount. Um, yeah.
We really, we only have two accounts in the sixty days, which shouldn't really be, because if you. The point is if we're, we're spending the money to mail the delinquent letters out, and we'll tell you we're gonna shut it off, but then. Well, we're gonna give you two more months to pay it. I mean, there's, and most of the people, like the guys, they're the ones that, you know, disability. Even though they know, they faithfully call us every month. I just wanna remind you, I will be in there, yes, we know, you know, but we appreciate the call, it's. And the ones that just, they don't call and they avoid us, and then it's just a perpetual thing, so. Uh, and it is amazing that when they go out to. Do that shut off, that they are here by the end of the day with that payment.
Those being.
Yeah, but we do have payment plans. We are wanting them to come in and ha, engage with us with a payment plan, not just avoid us and then hope. But it is in our policy to, uh, offer a payment plan.
Yeah, we discussed that last, we had, not stretching them out too far. Just not, not doing anybody any good, just keep letting, digging stuff in the hole.
But we just kind of wanted to publicly say that, you know, at least that we don't make those phone calls this month, to let those people know that we won't be making those calls.
Yeah, thank you. I don't think, I don't believe any objection from Kenzo.
No. I'm good with it.
Yeah, because I think several of my friends.
I'm gonna miss my monthly call from Billy. And we do have direct pay, so you can sign up for that and it's wonderful.
Yeah, I love that, I think.
Yeah.
All right, cool, thank you for working on that, I think that'll help out a lot. Giving back a lot of time.
Yeah.
Uh, anything to the street department?
Yeah, that's your utility, that's a bill that's due that.
All right, no. So related to subdivision much?
Normally I would have played it with this claim document, but, um, I did not.
Still haven't agreed, yeah.
We don't have an agreement, and then Jeremy said I could probably sit on it for just a little bit. Kind of like, you know.
Yeah, so this, oh, sorry, I thought. You're, so we're the, we're the ones, Bill, but they, so our, our issue is that we're not, we're not. Paying any bills that are money right now because we don't have an agreement.
Yeah, I agree.
Though, but this one is, is on us.
But it would.
We don't wanna get too, I mean.
Right, it would be relate, because that's just a small portion of what that bill will be. That's the one that was quoted, the thirty-five hundred to do that initial, um.
Yeah.
Assessment on the gas for that subdivision, so. They went ahead and built what they've done so far. I mean, I can track it, I've already started a folder that if I pay it out of order, I could reimburse theirselves.
Okay.
If I want.
I can stay in good gracious with USP.
Yeah.
I mean, they, if we have a gas leak, they send somebody over to weld it right up, if somebody hits a gas line. They send somebody over immediately to weld it. I really, if there's any way we can pay these and keep track of it. And then whenever the agreement is signed, that we get reimbursed for this because we have to.
Yeah.
These guys are very, very important, thank you.
If you're, if you're good with that, I mean.
I think the funds, I mean, I could do that. I just, we want to get us reimbursement.
And I think we need to just make sure it's in the minutes that we're gonna pay this, but that we, and if you need a motion for us. I'll make a motion that we pay this and then get, get reimbursed out of the ARPA money whenever we get an agreement with the. HVG. And it is hometown ventures group.
Yeah.
If we, once we get to reimburse us for that, that money right there, and I'll second that.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Cause it's, I do not wanna get in bad with them now.
No, and I think, and it plays fair with HVG too, because that's, that's what we're running, we don't wanna. Say, well, we're not paying your bills, we're gonna pay ours out of ARPA, you know, once we have the agreement, then we're.
Yes, because, because if, we've had backhoe hit a gas line and, and. Then we gotta send somebody immediately.
Yeah, we don't want them calling, saying, well, you owe us this month.
Well, you don't say your bill. Yeah, you don't pay the bill, I mean, I, I don't.
Post by Mike and, uh, second by Randy, any other discussion? Uh, roll call?
Uh, Justin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes. Spelled the best way I did.
So, part of the, part of the town, the cleanup, they're going to. I, I guess I better check with, make sure we bought the paint and stuff like that, I guess. Did you get an in whisper that?
Usually they put it like on our loads, but I've got to be in the end of the.
No, the, the paint will come from Sherman Williams, because it's a high vis orange, or yellow. I'll check with them tomorrow.
Yeah, uh, because I don't know that we got it from there last year, so.
Okay.
Remember Sherman Williams, so, but I'm not saying we didn't, but.
Okay, I'll make sure we got that tomorrow, that we're ready, and they're gonna pick up the, the cemetery. We're gonna go through there, they said they would send three or four kids to make a nice sweep of the cemetery, right, and things like that. Uh. And then they're gonna, we're gonna paint, if we have enough paint, they're also talking about painting the stripes to park. Like over Fifth Third Bank. And. They're at, uh, Eppinger. And on JT's Hardware, and they're by the. Park Bureau, and then if we have enough paint, I've heard, I talked to Susan, she didn't have a problem going over, doing until we run out of paint.
Uh, and Jeremy says they are going tomorrow to get what's left of what they need to pick up, they'll be ready.
Okay. Okay, oh, you just texting?
Yeah, he's on, but, I, he can't talk, so.
Oh.
Actually, we gotta work, this is a little tech, this is our first time on this.
Anyway, I'm embalmed.
Yeah.
Nobody's there. Yeah, that was bad. Okay, uh, I don't see anything in the streets parks or community center or cemetery. Who, oh, this joint meeting, do we need to get a date tonight?
Yeah, we, we, I, I need something, I, you guys.
Rob Township is, uh, ask, ask us for, sorry. Uh, meet regarding the budgets, we have a. Are they, I mean, can we do it the same night of our meeting? And get Mike late. Well, before. I don't know how long it'll take, you think? You wait?
No. Well, yeah, just an opportunity, we went, I think we had to do an additional appropriation last year, like. Hundred and twenty-eight dollars, which isn't anything, but it did go over budget. Um, so we bumped the budget up five thousand this year to cover any of those, uh, questionable things, but the, the board is asked. Um, if we can meet with fire together and have those discussions, we're making sure that we're allocating enough funds to match whatever's getting spent. Now, for the twenty twenty-six budget. Is what this is, so I, I would, I don't know, this is a, a finalized meeting, I think it's, it's more about we're starting the budget process.
Yeah, I would like to have it done by June, end of June, I, I'm not dragging this on, like.
Okay, so I, I think it really falls on whatever Jimmy's comfortable with and what she thinks that your baseball's good.
Yeah.
Because I wanna have three girls scheduled here shortly.
Yeah.
I don't have it yet, so if we set a date. I've got one on, oh shit, how come I ain't got it yet? It doesn't really matter if they give you a schedule or not, they say, Grandpa, you're going tonight.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I'm wondering if. Yeah, and that's, that's what I'm wondering if, does it, thank you, if we do it the same day, just like an hour and a half before.
Yeah.
Or means the four thirty. Does that, does that work for you though, for getting things?
You're already good at keeping this, you know, hostage here for.
But we're going to see ten.
But I have a thing. Just to go, what we expect, is that not, does that work for you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can leave out any time that could affect.
Well, so we'll move to set, uh, the joint meeting, May thirteenth at four thirty PM at Town Hall.
Yeah, so we just have anything.
And then Justin, do you know?
Well, do we both have to announce the executive?
Meeting.
Well, how are you wanting to do? Is it the executive session you want to do?
Well, I mean, we can't, for discussing budget, it has to be an open.
Um, that's right. But we, yeah, I mean, we can, I would say, yeah, we'd be better off.
Yeah, for both.
Okay. I mean, we would put it out. Just as far as advertising it as a.
Oh, yeah, I will add it to our webpage and I'll send it.
Yeah, if you want to host it too.
Yeah.
You know, we were covered on all ends, yeah.
Yeah.
So. Um, but yeah, I won't be able to be executive.
Yeah, that's right.
If you're, okay.
No, it didn't need to be.
Okay.
So, thank you, since it was outside the meeting.
Just a special, a special meeting at four thirty and then regular meeting at five thirty, so. Um. Do we, okay, let's, I'll entertain a motion to hold that one, five thirty, four thirty and the regular meeting at five thirty same day.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Justin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Randy?
Yes.
And motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Justin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Yep, Randy.
Yep. Thank you all for bearing with a late start.
It's okay.